Good afternoon.
I was at the Bill's side.
Oh, okay. I even had a customer.
Hello.
Oh, is it how he was at the Bill's? I mean, I think about thirty people there. The other council people? And so.
Josh Hannis.
Hi, I'm Amy Speaker.
Hello.
Stephanie, if we add like thousand dollars to your budget, can you?
When I show up to work and I've got something from there. Our best. Let's forget about that. That's a great spot.
And again, it'd be our neighborhood.
Yes, it's really, it's only like three blocks away, so.
It's pretty close to my home.
All right. How are you?
Yep.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the City of Cheyenne work session agenda for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. It's going to be the impacts of community health. Uh, that our agenda is going to be the presentation of social determinants of health, including physical environment, educational, income, healthcare systems, and social context. We have Amy and Josh with us. Uh, we'll go through that first, then we'll do, uh, questions afterwards, and then Willie Jordan. So, who'd like to take over?
Sure. Well, thanks for inviting us and having us.
Absolutely.
So, I'm Josh Hannis. I'm with the Wyoming Hospital Association. Spent about a dozen years prior to that, working in child protection. I'm not, I don't proclaim to be an expert in this by any means, but it's something I care about. Um, I've been in. Community activities and efforts in Cheyenne since I moved here in two thousand and eighty. Something to me and have. Work through and so, um, Dr. Aldrich, Councilwoman Aldrich, has heard this presentation, Amy. Share with you as well. It meant to be interactive, conversational, right? A lot of this is probably review for a lot of people, but. Other than somebody, they're continuing to dialogue, you're likely. Amy introduce herself real quick.
Uh, so I'm Amy Speaker. I'm the Director of Community Health at the Hospital, Cheyenne Regional, and before that spent about seven years at the Wyoming Department of Health as a maternal and child health epidemiologist. And, um, like Josh, certainly not an expert, uh, but very passionate about, um, thinking about how we can create systems of change, uh, to create our, uh, to have a healthier community. So excited to share what we do know and, uh, some opportunities that we may be able to work on together.
So, um, Amy's kind of steering the slide deck that's up there, and we're happy to share this. So, um, so just kind of starting to set the table a little bit, um, looking at what creates health. And so what you're looking at is, uh, a graphic that's created by the University of. Uh, population health, what they've done for a number of. Created a way to measure health in counties within a state and rank them as such. So, you could compare Laramie County to say Carvin County, but not Laramie County to say Wells County in Colorado. So all the rankings are within a state, and what they did was spent a lot of time and rigor developing how they would create those rankings and what impacts health. And so you can see on the slide, um, the different weightings in those big categories, which are those four blue boxes. There are social and economic factors, business environment. What I think is striking and interesting is that if you look at social and economic factors and what they measure underneath of that is a pretty significant, uh, portion of their ranking, right? There are also things that I would say take a long time to move the needle on, things like employment and. Education, right? These aren't changes that happen overnight. Because they're, they're often very complicated. Whereas things like clinical care, uh, you know, half of the, the weighting of social and economic factors. So, like I said, I've worked in and around hospitals for quite a while now, and, and I'll tell you, you know, particularly in Wyoming, we have safe, high-quality healthcare systems that if you're sick or broken, you can go in and, and receive, you know, very high-quality. Evidence-based care and, but, but what creates health largely, um, really lives outside of the four walls of that hospital. And, and, and just, and I'll show you in another slide later, but Laramie County tends to stay the last ten years or so, the last seven years or so, right about in the middle of the twenty-three counties. Or between fourteen and fifteen. Usually where it lives. So this next slide is just, you know, what are social determinants of health? I'm sure, you know, most people by now hear this is a big part of the conversation really nationally. Um, so economic stability, your physical environment, education, and, and so on down the line. And then things that, uh, live underneath those, those topics. Um, so what I think we wanted to do today is cover just a couple of those. I mean, we could have week-long seminars. And in fact, those exist and you can attend them if you like, but, um, but you know, for today's purposes, I think we, we can go over a couple. And then just offer some ideas that are evidence-based in those areas, some that are being tried otherwears and other places than shown some. Um, and just have a conversation about what things might look like in, in Cheyenne if, if we were to. So, uh, just starting with, with neighborhood and environment, spend a few minutes just talking about this. And what you see up there and what you hear in public health a lot is that your zip code matters more than your. Place where you live every day is a pretty good predictor of your overall health. Um, it can be difficult to measure in, in certain ways because the ways that we tend to measure. Health, um, become complicated, right? So you'll see things like the Dartmouth Atlas, uh, which is quoted a lot. It's a, it's a good, uh, good resource. Some of the arguments say that the geographic areas that they look at are too large, and that they don't risk stratify for things like income. So it, it, it can be tricky, but part of what, and I think Amy would agree as well, is that part of it is having these conversations at the most local levels possible about, about what can be done to improve things. And you can see here, you know, why your neighborhood matters, right? Poor neighborhoods tend to have higher crime, not necessarily access to food and healthy food specifically, um, um, ability to, to recreate and, and how close you live to a park. So I used to, some colleagues of mine worked in Albuquerque, uh, around community health, and one of the large initiatives that they had was in the neighborhood where they lived. Residents didn't feel safe to go outside for a number of reasons. Some of it was crime, but some of it was there was no lighting outside at night, and the sidewalks were in bad shape. They couldn't go out and run or walk their pets or, or spend time outside, and so they spent a lot of time with their city trying to fix some of those things so that people would have an ability to go outside, recreate, and enjoy their community. But again, I think that points out the very, uh, specific nature of what improvements should happen, right? And, and how do we engage people that live in those areas or experiencing things like homelessness, or hunger, or lack of childcare, and having those people actually at the table having the discussions? Because certainly, like I say a lot, like I'm just some guy in a suit, right? Like, I'm not at all the appropriate person to decide what's best for, for people in their situation. And how do we make sure that people are, are engaged in these conversations that we're having? So staying on that same, um, on that same thread, there are historically systemic things that create, uh, neighborhoods of poverty, of low education, of. Economic disadvantage, right? And so this is a, and, and I'll show some examples here in Cheyenne as well, but this is, uh, St. Louis, I believe. See across this major street on the, what appears to be the north side, the home values and income and education attainment, also the demographic makeup, and then south of that. So what was, and I don't know the answer, right, but something systemically created this division across one street. And, and I think, again, getting back to the point of having conversations and having honest conversations about, about why that is. And so what this next slide is, this is just another example. This is in New Orleans. And the graphic isn't great, but if you see up in the top that blue, that's life expectancy. The numbers are life expectancy. So on the top of the, the graphic there, the life expectancy is about eighty, down at the bottom right is seventy-five, and you'll see that spot in the middle, that's fifty-five. So from the seventy-five to eighty, that's a distance of about five miles. And then right in the middle of that, life expectancy is about twenty-five years lower than up at the top. Again, I'm not from New Orleans. I don't know what's happening in this community, right? But having, having honest conversations about why is that such a close?
Do you want to hypothesize? Um, what would your, what would your guess be?
Uh, well, so I'll bet quite a fair amount of money that there's a significant income difference, household income difference between. Um, and, and I think there's a slide later on where we'll talk about specifically that, about how, how your income is actually a tremendous. I, I would venture to guess that's probably true, that violence plays a part in some premature. But I, but again, I don't.
Would also say that, uh, while violence is probably part of it, um, there's a lot of evidence that living in, um, poor income neighborhoods or neighborhoods where it is feel unsafe. Um, that a lot of stressors can cause, uh, that, that, uh, your body carries a higher allostatic load, which leads to, um, more likelihood of chronic conditions, which then also limit life expectancy. Not just, um, you know, environmental factors specifically interacting with you in terms of like guns or, or that type of thing, but also how your, um, yeah, how your body adjusts to the stress load of living in a place.
So, I, so that's a fantastic point, and I think, and just one step further is, um, about how all of this, the slide with all the social determinants. And all of us have an appreciation for how interconnected they all are, right? You can't, I mean, focusing on one is fine, but understanding the relationship. To, to Amy's point that, um, with lower incomes that have higher levels of stress and have more chronic conditions, they also tend to lack access to healthcare via insurance or. Ability to get into, be a primary care physician, for instance, afford medications that, and afford medications that can help manage those conditions. And, and so, uh, again, understanding the, this, the relationship between all of these things and, and how do we address them comprehensively? And so this is just a, this kind of tees up the next couple of slides. Um, so the Area Deprivation Index, um, like it says there, was a, a measure created where they use, um, valid and reliable data to create these, um, scores for different neighborhoods. I believe they do them by census block. Um, and so it, and it's really cool, and I'm happy to, and if the link's not on one of these slides, I'm happy to provide it because it's really interesting to look at, um, and zooming in on communities. And it, it ranks them on a score of, like you can see there, one to ten, so one being a least disadvantaged group and ten being a, a more disadvantaged group. And so what you're looking at is that color coding system across the state of Wyoming. And then on the next slide, what we're looking at is, is Cheyenne, obviously. Um, so the, the interesting part that I like to point out for Cheyenne is if you see kind of right, like where the first E is in Cheyenne, going kind of up into your left. That, that very sharp line is Ridge Road, starting at I-25. So that line there, the road, of course, runs over just about to the Capitol. What you'll see is just south of Ridge is. Or, I'm sorry, Ridge, Randall. I apologize. You guys like, do you even live in Cheyenne? I apologize. Sorry. Uh, Randall Road. And so, um, so just north of that is a four, that, the coloring doesn't exactly match up in the screenshot I took, and then just below that is a nine. And, and so similar to the other slides that we showed, it's like, why, why is that true? Why is there such a difference in the living situations of people when you cross the street to the north compared to when you cross the street to the south? And again, I, I, I don't know the answer. I, I don't even pretend to know the solution, but it, I, I think it's interesting and worth exploring. That there are these sharp contrasts in very, um, in closed-in geographic spaces, right? And, and how is it that our town is, is organized in such a way?
Is that a wide del range then?
Um, I, I'd have to zoom in on it. It.
Like it's probably Pershing?
I think that's correct.
Yeah, it, it probably is Pershing.
And also.
Yeah, because the gray spot that doesn't have any data in it, that's the airport. Of the. Fan lettering. There's a gray that looks kind of white-ish.
And like I said, I'll, I'll provide the link, and, and I mean, it's a free resource. Anybody can go in and you can find any area and get a little more detail on it. Um, and so this, this next slide is, this is Casper, and I know that's not necessarily of interest to us, but it's just another example of, you see the white kind of right in the middle of the screen there as being a, a much, by this measure, a, a less disadvantaged area than just about every area surrounding it. Um, one of the things I think is interesting as well is if you were following the most recent legislative session with redistricting. And that's obviously wildly complicated and nuanced for a lot of reasons, but one of the terms that kept popping up that I thought was interesting, um, were, um. Now it just ran out of my head, communities of interest. So, and, and this is a question, right? Is the group in that white shaded a community of interest with the group in the red neighborhood next to it, right? Do they have the same, um, priorities when it comes to public policy and who represents them politically, and their neighbors just maybe a couple blocks over? Again, I mean, I, I don't know, right? Um, but it would seem to me that there are probably significant differences in how they experience the world compared to, to their neighbors. And how do we better understand that and what's important to those different groups? And again, like I said, these are, there's a couple of things as it relates to, to your environment that are, um, so scientifically supported at the top, has, has an evidence base to it that's been, uh, validated. Uh, evidence of effectiveness is oversimplifying, is something that's shown some promising practice, right? It's being done somewhere to, to some success. And so scientifically-supported mixed-use development, right? So that's, um, you know, as you all know, right, it's, you know, development that includes all kinds of things, and not just a bunch of three hundred thousand dollar houses, but it includes commercial space and rental space and, um, uh, varying values of the property or of the, the dwelling that, that are built on there. Uh, similarly zoning regulations for land use, right? So thinking through, um, I know some larger metropolitan areas have like planned communities when they build subdivisions, right? So they, they have to have these certain things that, um, you know, parks and parking and different, uh, um. Different types of, of housing options within them, right? Um, and evidence of effectiveness is inclusionary zoning and housing policies. So similar to the zoning regulations, but really requiring developers to do certain things, uh, specifically around low-income housing in this. So you're going to develop, you know, such and such on this piece of property, so much of that needs to be, um, either affordable or low-income for people in that area to, to be able to. I don't know. Not sure.
What about? Uh, what about as a neighborhood, uh, gentrified? You know, it's just gone south, now it's, we'll bring it back north?
That's really, I, I'm glad you brought that up. So I, I've sat in on a, on a number of meetings in some, some national organizations that work specifically on, um, neighborhood revitalization and investing in, in communities that have struggled. And what every single one of them has said, and what, what I heard them say was that gentrification is going to happen, right? It's how do you manage that and mitigate the negative impacts? Which is not a terribly encouraging thing to hear, right? And so this is, this is a, this is an area where I don't think anybody's gotten it exactly right anywhere. And, and there's going, you know, I, I just don't think in any of this, there's a, there's a solution, or even a series of solutions, that makes everything exactly right in the way we need it to be. So, so being thoughtful moving forward about how we do this, we're absolutely going to see this, right? And like, to what degree can we mitigate or, um, or address that in, in another area with another idea, right?
I think, um, one example of ways to help with mitigating, um, gentrification is around investment in communities that are already there. So making sure that they have access to capital, access to, um, start their own businesses, making sure that they, um, are able to take advantage of the same tools that people that would be coming into their community have access to. Because people that live in their communities, they have businesses, they have, um, you know, visions of what they want their community to be, and so by making sure they have similar tools. Um, you can ensure that they have a place and can help to develop and, um, improve their neighborhood without necessarily being kicked out of it.
So just, so moving on to another area, um, quickly, I, I spent a lot of time on the last one. I apologize. I want to be sensitive to, to time. But, so economic stability, again, another sort of headline area of, of social determinants. And, and we've touched on it a little bit, right? Your income is a, is an excellent predictor of your health. Um, you know, we talked, like we said, chronic illness tends to be, uh, more prevalent in, in lower-income households. Children in low-income households tend to be sicker. Uh, low-income mothers have, uh, uh, lower, lower birth weight babies or, or more premature babies. Um, so this, this next slide comes from, again, the, the University of Wisconsin's county, um, county health rankings. So this is the median household incomes ranked by county, right? So Teton is at the top of that. No surprise, uh, to anybody, right? And then if you go. Oh, there it is.
Sorry.
So you're fine. So then this column on the right now is the overall health ranking of those counties. So like I said before, you know, one to twenty-three, Teton has the highest median income, is also number one, uh, overall. And you'll see that with a, a couple of exceptions, that tends to track pretty well, right? Your, your median household income to your overall health ranking. So the next slide is, uh, this is percentage of children with, who are eligible for free and reduced lunch. I put on the side there, I actually think those are twenty-twenty income figures, but it's going to be pretty close, um, for who qualifies for, for free and reduced. So back to. I could for a minute, you know, about where you live and your environment and communities of interest. Are the communities that live in those nine and ten neighborhoods maybe more concerned about what policy is happening around free and reduced lunches in their schools? Now, I understand COVID sort of changed that. Um, there's some differences there. It's also not a city issue, right? It's a, I, I think most of this actually happens at the federal level, the funding for free and reduced lunch, but, but it's just, it's just an example that I think is easy to highlight about, you know. How many people that live in those neighborhoods that are ranked like a, a one, the least disadvantaged, are thinking about, spending a lot of time thinking about how their kid's going to eat a meal, right?
It looks like Dr. Aldrich has a question.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
No, please.
Dr. Aldrich, go ahead.
Or, or determine for you, um, I, I just was curious, it, so it looks like Laramie County is number nine for income, but we were twelfth in health on that last slide that you were on. Is that correct? The left-hand column is our median household income, and then the right-hand column is our overall health ranking.
Yes.
Okay. It doesn't perfectly match up one-to-one, but, you know, generally people that are at the top are at the top, and in the middle, in the middle, and then at the bottom, at the bottom. Thank you. Very, very, um, very astute analysis that I just gave, yes.
You didn't see the hand motion.
Yes, the hand motion is also very much helped.
And like I said, again, it doesn't, it doesn't track. It's not one-for-one, like Amy said. Um, they, they tend to be pretty close. But that goes back to, like we said, income is a good predictor, but also income, median household income lives within those social and economic factors in that early slide I showed. That is a, a heavy part of the, the weighting as they, as they rank counties. Um, okay, so we can, so the next, so again, just things that, that work. Again, a lot of these, you know, they're not necessarily city, you know, within the purview of a city policy, right? Some of these are at the federal level, but just as, by way of example, um, childcare subsidies are, are scientifically, uh, supported to help people raise their incomes and move out of poverty. I mean, anybody who has kids or has had kids. Past fifteen years knows just how insanely expensive. Um, the, the alternative, um, if, if you need a parent to work, uh, can be incredibly unsafe, and I've heard stories about how that can turn out. Earned income tax credits, these are, uh, you know, one of the actual, like, best-supported things that came out of welfare reform in the late nineties that actually moved more people out of poverty, particularly women. Um, these have become controversial in recent years for, for reasons that I don't totally understand, uh, but it is a, an evidence-based way to help, uh, advance people. Uh, full child support pass-through in disregard, so just like it says up there, it's, um, some states have taken the steps of not holding back any child support payments and, and those payments going directly to. I actually believe Wyoming, um. Don't quote me on this. I don't think Wyoming holds child support payments back. I think they do totally. I could be wrong about that. And then a couple, um, ideas underneath that, that seem to be, uh, seem to be working, unemployment assurance and, um, individual development accounts. So this is really where participants and, um, usually corporations, um, will create. I always think of it as like a health savings account, but that's probably not a great example, but it, but it's, you know, a, a partnership between an individual and, and some other entity that's, uh, putting money toward, um. For an account that can be used to, to all kinds of things, right? Um, and there's typically, uh. Conditions of participation, right? Like you have to do certain things to, to be able to remain eligible. And so I will mercifully stop talking, uh, now and let somebody much smarter than me go.
Not true. Um, thanks, Josh. Uh, and as Josh mentioned, a lot of these social determinants are very intertwined, so you'll see that some of the things, as I talk about them, up reference economics and, uh, housing stability, uh, throughout. So the first one that I want to talk about quickly is community and social context. And understanding that the connections that we make in our community and how connected you feel to our community matters for your health. Um, having a group of people that can support you matters for your, and I think a lot of us have seen this maybe more so in the pandemic than any recent time, where not being connected can be really bad for both our mental and physical. And, uh, one of the ways that we can be, um, disconnected from our community is through discrimination, and I know this body is very familiar, um, with discrimination in our community. Uh, when I give this presentation, not everybody is, and so on the left, uh, is a picture from the sixties up in Lander, which is not our community. But, um, I think people think that racism doesn't happen here in Wyoming, discrimination doesn't happen here, um, and it's just not true, as you all know. So just want to show that it's something that has happened in the past and that those policies from the past impact how, um, how our community is designed today. And who is currently benefiting in our community, whether that's based on race, whether that's gender, whether that's income status, um, all different kinds of ways, um, that discrimination can show up in our community. income status, all different kinds of ways that discrimination can show up in our community. And discrimination doesn't just impact and is a negative feeling or something that is icky in the moment, it has real impacts on our health. And one of the ways that does that is, as I mentioned before, that stress load. If you are feeling like you are unsafe because of who you are in our community, that can lead to shortened life expectancy due to stress levels. So we see in the United States generally Hispanic and Black Americans have four years lower life expectancy than white Americans. In our state, we see on the reservation that the average life expectancy is between 50 and 55 years, whereas overall life expectancy in Wyoming is closer to 78 years. So it's a huge difference. And then, of course, that life expectancy is kind of the ultimate outcome, but the things that go along the way of diabetes, hypertension, asthma, also all at higher rates. To bring it home to Laramie County, the graph that you see here is data from the hospital around ED visits and inpatient hospitalizations for COVID. And so you see, the gray bars are the percent of different race and ethnicities, actually, sorry, this is just a race, I don't have ethnicity on this slide, just race. And the gray bars are the population within our county. So you see that 91.9% of our county residents are white. However, when we look at inpatient hospitalizations and ED visits, so inpatient is in yellow, ED visits is in blue, only 77% were among white residents of Laramie County. So then if we look at our Black community, which represents 2.5% of our overall community, they represented one and a half times more than expected, the population that was seen in our emergency department and in our inpatient. So, you know, there's lots of different factors that go into this, not just about, it's not just about being Black, but about what that means in our community, whether that's where you work, and if you had to continue to work during COVID, it means where you live, how many people do you live with, can you afford to live, you know, in different settings? And all of those then lead to COVID risk, which then leads to some of these disparities that you see. That does, that does include Hispanic, I don't actually have that slide with me. The way that I have data broken out from the hospital reflects race and ethnicity, so this is just race. So it would include people, anybody that identified as white regardless of the ethnicity. If you include Hispanic in people of color in Laramie County, so about 15% of our Laramie County residents are Hispanic. And if you look at COVID rates, because the way the census works, the census has about an unknown of about 4% in Laramie County for Hispanics. And as a result, that means that there's not, you can't really see any difference between the rate of hospitalization or ED visits by Hispanics. So that's why I chose to show the race, because you can see the differences here. Whereas in the ethnicity one, based on the census-level data, it's a little bit more So one of the things that I want to talk about here, when we talk about race and ethnicity and health outcomes, is how we talk about potential solutions. One thing that we often think, and I think are taught as kids often, is about being equitable, or, sorry, not being equitable, about being equal, and everybody getting the same thing. I'm sure lots of you have seen this graphic. But on the far left-hand side of the screen, you see, when we are, when we give everybody the same thing, we may not be meeting their needs or getting to the goals that we want to achieve. So if the goal is for everybody to watch the baseball game, giving everybody a box to stand on doesn't actually help everybody see the game. A more equitable distribution of those boxes would allow for the same resources to be used and for us to achieve our goal of having everybody watch the ballgame. And then in the third image, we can also think even further about how we're distributing resources and how we're using resources, and actually change the system that we watch ballgames in. And who, then we can remove some of the barriers that may be facing communities to participate in different ways in our community. So what works, I do think that collecting and reporting data is really important. That might be the epidemiologist in me saying that. But I do think that understanding what's happening in our community and within our organizations is really important, naming the problems, and then working towards addressing solutions. Josh mentioned this as well, but I think including diverse perspectives in decision-making, there's a good amount of psychology out there that suggests that diverse groups make better and faster decisions that benefit more people. I also think that it's important to use the phrase, I think that first came from the disability community in the late 80s, which was nothing about us without us. And I think that there's a lot of ways that we can institutionalize that in terms of how we pick people to be on committees, how we invite people to different tables, both within the city and more broadly within our community. I think there's also programming that we can do to get people to be invested in our community, including mentorship programs for youth and ways to engage older adults as well. I know this pandemic has made it very hard to connect sometimes. And then the last social determinant that I want to talk about briefly is healthcare. One of the biggest components of, well, one of the biggest components of being able to have healthcare is whether or not you're insured. About 12% of Laramie County adults are uninsured that are under 65. Obviously, after 65, you qualify for Medicare. That puts us number five in the, sorry, the Wyoming rate is more like 14%. So we're doing a little bit better in Laramie County than we are overall in Wyoming. However, this is still above the national rate for uninsured. And when you are uninsured, you're more likely to delay care, you're more likely to have things become bigger problems before you get any kind of prevention. And that really can then impact all of the other social determinants, whether you're able to work, you know, how much cost burden that's going to be if you wait to get some kind of treatment. So I think there really are some opportunities to increase access to healthcare in our community. So one of the easiest ways to do that, again, is not necessarily a city-specific solution, but Medicaid expansion would likely cut the uninsured rate by over half, is what the Department of Health anticipates. It'll also increase access, they estimate, I believe, that premiums would come down about 5%, 5 to 10%?
15.
5 to 15% if there was expansion, which would benefit all of us in all of our communities. We also know that access has a lot of different components to it, one of those being transportation, infrastructure, and ability to get to care. And then I think the other thing that we think about is, just because you have access to it, if you aren't feeling respected, or like the person that you're going to see is actually hearing what your needs are, maybe you don't actually access care. So it's really important that we incorporate some of these social determinants of health. If you have diabetes and you don't have good access to food, it's going to be really hard to treat your diabetes. And so getting you access to healthcare isn't going to be the only thing you need. Also inclusive policies, so people understand, making sure that there's translation services, and people like community health workers who understand the conditions in which people are coming from, or the, you know, maybe having someone that also has diabetes walk you through your treatment. And then, of course, training that we can do to improve that. If you want to highlight just a few of the actions that we are taking in our community and some of the city work that is going on to address some of the social determinants of health. The first is, at the hospital, we have the Navigator Grant, which allows us to help people enroll in health insurance. That is a free service throughout our community and throughout the state. And we were able to enroll a 30% increase in health insurance in the last year, over the year before. So we're really excited about getting more people access. We also know that there are lots of different barriers to being healthy, as we've been talking about all day. And one of them can sometimes be legal issues. We've been seeing that with housing a lot right now, knowing if you're behind on rent, if you're behind, if you're struggling with a landlord, and you have asthma, and you haven't, you can't get that mold taken care of, and you're continuing to go to the emergency department. We actually have two attorneys that are available to help address legal needs that impact a patient's health. And that is partially through the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is something else that can really increase access to housing within our community. One of our partnerships with the police department that we're really excited about is the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, which is an opportunity for folks who have a high level of involvement with law enforcement and the justice system, but low-level offenses, not felonies, to be diverted from jail or a citation, and instead be referred to work with a case manager. We know that a lot of people, you know, it's small, little things, that if you're able to address where they're sleeping, getting them enough food, that they are going to be a lot less involved with law enforcement, and that continuing to put them in jail is not actually solving those underlying issues. We've been doing this program since the summer of 2020, and have had almost 100 participants involved. Like, one of the stories, one of the big success stories, is we had one person who had had 75 interactions with law enforcement, and since enrollment in the program has had one. And so I think that's a really great program for the participants that are doing this, getting the benefit of it, as well as for the use of time for our officers.
How's that one funded?
We currently have a Department of Justice grant that we are writing the no-cost extension right now, so it should last through June of 2023, is the way that it's currently funded. And we will be looking for funds after that.
What is the amount to the funds?
So we had...
Funding?
Yeah, so currently, the funding is for one caseworker and for one half-time, kind of program manager that helps pull together the partners. I should have done the total grant dollar, so I guess it was $100,000 a year for three years. So, and I would say that we are not spending that full amount, and we will have, that's why we're able to do the no-cost extension, where we're able to extend the program for a little bit longer, but have not, aren't going to get any more funds to do that.
Yeah, I'll speak, Dr. Aldridge.
Yeah, let me check it out. So Dr. Aldridge's question is, have programs such as employee wellness programs seemed to have an impact on community health? So I think that there are some, my understanding, and I'm not an expert in employee wellness programs, there's some mixed evidence in terms of how well they operate, and that sometimes they can incentivize people who were likely going to spend wellness. But that there are some specific components of those wellness, that are maybe not activity-related, but are like cancer screening-related and other kind of healthcare-type activities that can be more impactful. So I would say that the evidence is mixed from what I know, but again, not an expert in that area. And then addressing food supply, like food deserts and community gardens. So food deserts are defined by the USDA as not having a grocery store within a mile if you're in an urban environment, which Cheyenne is considered an urban environment, and then not having one within 10 miles if you live in a rural environment. So there are several food deserts in Wyoming, in Cheyenne, the downtown area being one of them, and the west side of downtown being a food desert. And access to food, you know, we often see, so the type of food that's available in communities is often correlated with the income in those areas. So much more access to fast food, and liquor retailers tend to be concentrated in areas where there also tend to not be as many healthy options. So, you know, sometimes we think of people making the choice to not eat healthy, when in fact oftentimes it's what they have available is not actually a healthy option. And I will tell you, I love community gardens, but I don't know much of the evidence on them, so I can't really speak to the community garden part. The last one here, I think all of us are aware that Wyoming is the number one state for suicide rates in the country, and has been for the last two years. Laramie County is unfortunately, right, it's a little bit below the state rate, but essentially the same. And one of the things that we are excited, hopefully, the contract is coming soon, but we will also be working with law enforcement to pair up to actually have a co-responder that is a trained therapist, to go out on mental health calls for about 15 to 20 hours a week is what we have funding for. And we're hoping that what that will do is, again, allow improvement in the way that we're able to help those that are calling for mental health-related calls. We know officers, that's not their main, I mean, they do receive training, but it's not their main training. And so getting them out there with someone who knows that work can hopefully reduce the amount of officer time in addressing those types of calls, and get folks into access to behavioral health services in a meaningful way. Great. So the next thing I just wanted to go over really quickly is just kind of the whole mentality of thinking about social determinants of health. And I am going to read this, because I think it helps us frame why we want to do this work. So the upstream parable, sometimes it feels like this, there I am, standing by the shore of a swiftly flowing river, and I hear the cry of a drowning man. So I jump into the river, pull him into my arms, I don't know how that got changed to public, my arms around him, or pull my arms around him, pull him to shore, and apply artificial respiration. Just when he begins to breathe, there is another cry for help. So I jump into the river, reach him, pull him to shore, apply artificial respiration, and then just as he begins to breathe, another cry for help. So back in the river again, reaching, pulling, applying, breathing, and then another yell, again and again, without end, goes the sequence. You know, I am so busy jumping in, pulling them to shore, applying artificial respiration, that I have no idea, or no time to see who the hell is upstream pushing them all in. And I think this is sometimes where we get, is where we build ourselves the whole system of pulling people out of a river. And it would be much more cost-effective and much more enjoyable for everybody if we prevented people from being pushed into the river in the first place. And so I think you all in this room have a really unique seat in that river analogy, as we know that public policy is among the most powerful tools for improving population health, according to the Institute of Medicine. And if you look at this river analogy, you see upstream there is really where we make community impact, and the way that we do that is through the passage of laws and policies and regulations that create this healthier environment for people. When we move more downstream, we see that individual-level impact, and that's where we see some of the work that can be done directly with individuals who have already fallen in the water, and when we look at what hospitals can do when people get sick. So I think there are both the social needs that can be done at an individual level, as well as the healthcare that can be done at that individual level. But I think, I really invite us to think about how we envision these problems upstream before people become sick. One of the frameworks that's available to kind of think and push us to think in that way is called Health in All Policies. It's a framework with five different components, I'm not going to go into this very much, but just know that this is a tool, they have a whole array of ways and strategies to do this. I think that there are a couple of things I want to highlight here. One is intersectional collaboration. So these problems are big, these aren't things that, you know, if the city just did this, then it would go away. Like, that's just not true. It's not true that if the hospital just did this, it would go away. These are things that we're going to have to work on together. And that kind of leads into that number three of multiple partners involved in this work, and bringing those partners together, and engaging the stakeholders, the people that are actually experiencing. So I do want to just challenge you all, and have you challenge yourself. So I do want to just challenge, challenge you all and have you challenge yourself. I think you, you all wear multiple hats in this community. There is public policy. So what laws support health? How might laws you thought weren't related to health actually be impacting somebody's health? And then how are you representing your community and the people that may be not experiencing the best health? I think our community as more of a nebulous entity is, is another place you can look at the systems of care within our community, whether those are formal or informal. But in our own organizations, and the city is a big organization in our community, what are the policies we have, you know, do we have breastfeeding rooms for moms who want to breastfeed? Do we have pay-lease policies? What are, what are some of the organizational components that we take on to ensure that people can be healthy? And then lastly, interpersonally, what are we doing to help each other and within our community to ensure that we have that, those strong connections to the work and to be in health? That's what we have.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from committee?
I had one, actually, I reflected the last slide and the last part there about policies and programs that we have in our community. Well, there were two. They were state programs and they were funded with TANF funds. When they started going through budget cuts, they got rid of them. Dads are making a difference through workforce services might still be operational, but I think it's been severely cut down. But the other one was Father Factor. We have that one locally. We saw that the data there was actually getting fathers more involved in children's lives. And some of the things that they had to do to be in the program was be current on, in their child support. And it goes back to the very first slide you were talking about, where the lines and the different shades of, in our community, and income disparities, but I think there's generational poverty too, you know? So when you give, and it kind of goes to the river analogy, people opportunities, you know, then they're going to prosper.
Yeah.
So I want to see that, you know, there's opportunities for us in the city to come, come back and look at some of those programs that did work, that were at the state level, maybe we can bring them back here at the local level.
I think that, I think that the city has opportunities definitely to fill in gaps where the state has not.
The other one that really surprised me was how, when we're looking at zoning, how that can affect health. I never really thought of it that way before.
Yeah, and I think, I actually had the opportunity to meet Mayor Collins earlier this week, a little bit about some of the restrictive covenants that are in Cheyenne, where in the, in the, in the covenants, okay, there we go, in the covenants, they prohibit who can live in certain homes and in certain neighborhoods within our community, which I, again, I'm sure most people on this call are aware of. But one of the things that we also talked about is how that also leads to intergenerational differences. So even though those were no longer enforceable as of 1949, the ability to buy a home then, and since most people invest in, and that's how they build wealth, is through their home, if people were excluded from buying homes or the homes that they bought ended up being in areas that were low, were not allowed to increase in value as much, then that ultimately leads to disparity in who currently has wealth in our community and who has access to it.
And the only other question I had was, how many states have not extended Medicaid now?
And, you know, obviously, that's a state decision, but how, I would encourage us to think about how that affects Cheyenne, right? How many people are eligible? How many people can, can have their chronic conditions managed appropriately and be in the workforce? And happy to have that conversation separately, but there are policy decisions that tend to be controversial, that are steeped in evidence of that living. And I guess I would say, and I apologize here to jump ahead of you, but I think Amy and I talked a little bit about an ask, right? Like, what is like one sort of concrete thing that we would say? And, and we touched on it earlier, but I think it's, it's really, really important. And it's difficult to do, right? Practically, even though it's easy to think about, is when we're thinking about involving fathers in something and creating opportunities to work, to purchase homes, to, to do other things in this community, having those people who are struggling to do those things, like, who are we doing this for, right? And those people have to be involved in the conversation. And it, we were actually talking before the meeting, like, just organizing this meeting is complicated, right? Reaching out and doing something different is even more so. And because it's not, you know, we can come here at noon and have this conversation, right? Not everybody can do that for any variety of reasons. So how do we make it accessible based on their particular condition to, whether it's, you know, economic advancement, whether it's mental health, whatever it is, right? Have to be asking questions from people with lived experience, making sure that they are, are driving those conversations and that people in this room are facilitating that and making that happen. That would be my, my ask and my encouragement. And also, not just to say that and run out of here and go away, but to what extent can I participate in that with you all and be helpful? Whether it just, I mean, I'm a, I live in War II. I've been in Cheyenne 14 years. This is my home. I'm committed to it. I work here and my professional life is on a statewide level, but this is where I stay, right? So, so how can I be a resource to you all?
Dr. Aldridge.
Okay, Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Chairman Rabel. I just wanted to say thank you to both of you for coming and making this presentation available. Every time I, I think this is my, a third time to see it, and each time I see it, I glean more information. It is amazing to me that in a community of our size where we have three different zip codes for physical addresses, that there's so much diversity and so much disparity between our, the different groups in our community. And as I'm looking at the heat maps or the colored maps that you showed at the beginning, I'm really curious and I'm going to go in and look, because some of those areas that show lower health standards or lower health as a community are in our, what we would refer to as our county pockets. And that's been an area that we've identified as being one of our priorities this next year. So I think it's, this is just an excellent reminder to me and hopefully to all of us that the decisions we're making around development and planning and policy really do impact community health. I think the transportation issues, I think ring true and, or resonate with me as well as, you know, what we're doing. It's something as simple as the farmer's market being now out in Lyons Park versus, you know, closer to some of the areas in our community that don't have, or what we would call a food desert, or don't have as good of health as others, we've now moved that fresh fruit and produce further away from them. And I just think that sometimes think, we do things without understanding the ripple effect or the ramifications. So always appreciate your wisdom and your thoughtfulness and continuing to bring us information like this.
Senator, any further questions or comments from committee?
One final one. You didn't mention in there, we used to call it the X-factor, now it's the PS5 factor that goes into the families that have that quality. I just see it in my own grandchildren now. They like to sit on the couch with their PS5s instead, the station 5, instead of being out there playing baseball or being on our basketball courts. It kind of goes back to some of the things I was thinking about zoning. We were able to put in more basketball courts, tennis courts, improve our greenway, do things to encourage people, especially kids, to get outside and be active rather than sitting on the couch, working their thumbs.
Any further comments or questions, committee? Mayor, do you have anything?
Appreciate it.
Amy, Josh, thank you guys very much for presenting for us. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
There's no further questions. We're adjourned.
Thanks so much for listening.
Yeah, thank you.